Guidelines on which the timeline is pertinues in.
Yes.
Which it should be and will.
All right, Joe, just ready when you are.
Okay, thank you, Sam. This Monday, August 16, 2021, about one minute after one. It says on special call agenda, meeting of the commissioner of court. We'll call order. We do have a forum here today acknowledging guests that are also. And we do have a gentleman here that wants to have a public debate. Yes, sir.
Our debate's ready for you.
Oh, all right, okay.
Let me caution you again, the court will not address anything unless there's some clarification they want to ask you.
Yes, sir.
There'd be no response, and you've got five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Yes, my name's Kenneth Castrol, and over there Chuck Lamont, he's on the River Bottom Hunt Club that I'm on with, that's owned by a timber company. And Lisa was here or on another, by another timber company, what's the name of the place? The chain look, but they own FRC. Okay, so anyway, I've been hunting on this thing about seven years, five years now. And but the gates were torn down when we went up and found out that that's going to be made a county road. And we didn't know anything about it. And the problem that we have in suggestion about this thing is that you open it up to a county road. We've already had troubles with poachers. And then we've all been heard of people going to our campsite, you know, and thievery. And so now it's been locked up, the gate at the front off of the farm to market road. And on our back property, there's been a gate for 30 years, what I've been told. And so our concerns are now opening it up to any and everybody. It's going to put us at risk because our camp road is just right off of that, off that road that's being proposed to be the county road 2017. And and we just don't understand why this needs to be a county road. And we have a lot of concern about having poachers come in there. And off of that, this proposed 2017, we have a lot of different lanes, little trails and roads going back to our deer stands and everything. And we're just very concerned people are going to come through there. And we talked to Mr. Coleman, the back of the property, which is owned by him, he lives in Higginspine. He didn't know anything about this till two weeks ago, till he saw that gate just tore down and pushed over. And so, you know, it just doesn't seem the appropriate thing to do. And I don't understand, none of us understand, what's the need of making it a public county road? I mean, there's nobody else back there that I'm aware of that needs access. And if they did need access, be more than glad to give them a key to the gate to get to their property, you know? And that's that's our concern and just wish and hope that that this doesn't turn into a county road. And and the thing about it is, if you haven't ever drove it, you might want to. Because I mean, this thing is in bad shape and for just any and everybody to be driving and using it for a public road. So the amount of tax money it would take to maintain that that road would be, I think it'd just be wasting taxpayer's money. That's my, our concern and hope that y'all would reconsider not making it a county road. That's all I got to say, and appreciate every one of y'all's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to skip over item number one. We're going to go to number two. Discussing appropriate approved revised tax reimbursement policy for Newton County. I know we adopted one here about a month ago, and this is a revised one. That it made it more simpler, had Courtney look at it, had John look at it, and they all totally agree with it. So I just need y'all to approve that tax reimbursement policy, if you don't mind.
Make that motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion been made and second that we approve the tax, tax reimbursement policy for Newton County. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number three is discussing appropriate approved the 2020 tax dot county road mileage certification.
You got it. Crystal, where's Crystal?
Crystal. Jesus, Andrew, tell one out.
You got it.
Okay, the certification mileage on that is 552.221. Your motion to accept it.
Make that motion.
Mr. White, you did that?
Yes.
Do second. Motion been made and second that we approve the 2020 tax dot county road mileage certification. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number four, discussing if appropriate, consider taking action regarding a bid received on the property held in trust by the taxing entity. If y'all remember back in the regular session on the green building down in Deuville, it was, went up for tax sale, it was $19,000, and we took no action on it. So I would, I would like for y'all to consider that we will not accept that bid.
You're right.
Will not accept that bid. But it needed to be in action form. Make that motion that we not accept the bid on the tax sale property that was $19,000.
I second.
Motion been made, Mr. White, and second, Mr. Thompson, that we reject the bid that was received on the property through the tax sale. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number five is discussing appropriate approved reaffirming County Road 2017 as a public county road. And this road has been in discussion for some time now. And as I have been told, and I've searched the records, that it was always a county road 2017. At some time back prior years, it was named a private road. And so it's been brought my attention that we need to reaffirm it as a county road. And let's, whatever y'all want to. And if you, if you want to wait in, wait in here, send your precinct.
Well, it's just, it's a road that's been in question for several years now. Nothing, nothing against any of you guys at all, none. I'm not doing this, it's just, it's time. We've had so much trouble throughout our community about that road out there with taxpayers. There, y'all got a ton of taxpayers out there that own, own property in there. I think there's 12 to 14 property owners, individual property owners in there, along with all the hunting clubs and FRC. And so there's a good bit of private land in there also that people are paying taxes on.
There's only one private, private.
No, there's 14 property owners.
They all have dog traps.
I understand. I'm just saying.
September company, they're the only ones that touch that road. No finances.
Anyway, I was, I've talked to several people about that road. I talked to Dead Cock, I talked to 911. A lady is not there at Dead Cock anymore that I've been messing with this road for two and a half years now. That told me that when they come out and done the 911 addresses, that that road should have never, it should have never been in question to start with because it ties two major roads into heaven. Years ago, it's called the Ridge Road. There's a reason for it to be called Ridge Road. It's because that was the only way to get from one road or one community to the other community with all the creeks and the water and all the stuff you used to get up from years and years and years. That's the reason it was established as a county road and stayed a county road for many, many, many years. So with all the floods that we've had in the past and people getting trapped in there on 1414 and 2626, they're, they're all familiar with this road. Most of them people live out there in them areas, so they know where to come and go. And we just think at this time that it, that it's for our taxpayers, that it is time to put it back or make it designated as a county road. That County Road 2017 is on the other end of that road. It's never was took down. So we, there was already a portion of it that said County Road 2017.
I think those dates are about 35 years ago.
It was a, it was a county road in '09 or something like that, 2009.
Yeah, like 30 years, so I think.
So.
Sure, it's all, it's kind of like still wants to change.
That's your opinion. So I'll make that motion that we, we, we firm that road as County Road 2017.
I'll second.
Motion been made, Mr. Bomby, and second, Mr. Thompson, that we reaffirm, approve the County Road 2017 of public county road. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number six, discussing appropriate approved and accept quick claim deed from Deuville ISD and Newton County Fire District number one, for the 1056 acres and the meat market building located there on. And this is, this is the same one that we rejected up there as a bid. I have reached out to Deuville ISD and also Fire District, and they've, they have signed the quick claim deed over to us. We are the trustee, now we are the actually owners. They have been filed, did you know it? Okay. And so I just want to make sure that we approve and accept our quick claim deeds from.
I'm going to make that motion, second.
Motion been made for Mr. Thompson and second, Mr. Bomby, that we approve and accept the quick claim deed from Deuville ISD and Fire District number one, 105856 acres and a meat market building located there on. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number seven is discussing, first, that they accept bids, select committee and recommendation for engineer architect services for 2021, building resistance and infrastructure and community brick funding.
We only received, which one was first, architect or? Only received one, it's the middle. And it was from, this is for the engineer architect services, from Arseno Wilson and Co. That's the only submittal that we received. They're out of Port Arthur, and they, they submitted several times with us. And they scored pretty good, we just never selected them. They've worked on large and small projects, looked at their resume and some projects they've done. And I don't even know if we're going to use them. It just depends what kind of projects we end up choosing for this, this funding opportunity. To, based on that, just with the one, if y'all agree, I just, I suggest, you know, I suggest that we just go ahead and approve them. And another reason is not to go out for bids again, is we're on a very short timeline with this brick funding. It's only a couple of months out there, so.
Okay, bring them back up speed on this brick funding.
Brick is.
It's only nationwide.
Yes, it's nationwide, it's competitive, it's building resilience, infrastructure. It's limited on projects, you know, it's not like some of these HMGP's used to be or some of these projects used to be where it was very widespread. These are very limited in projects. Generators, some planning stuff.
It's a man.
It's not, it's 7525. So, you know, we're, and that's, that's another, you know, something else we've got to look at. And these folks know, and they've worked on these kind of projects before also. So they also know that they don't get paid, they don't get paid if we don't get funded. So, you know, so they know that. So I don't know if y'all want to go forward with it or just look and see what a small project we might be.
How much money, how much money? Eight, nine, seven, five, four?
Going to 400 million all over the United States.
That's what I was thinking, 400 all over the United States. So you.
Hopefully they'll give it.
Yeah, because it's, we applied, I didn't, was it last year, year foremost? Early last year or something, I don't remember. We're still waiting to hear from them. They keep saying it's in process, in process, so, you know, that's one of those that.
Can you support that?
It can.
Can you support that? I don't think it's worth it.
Yes. This is just, this is one of the projects we can apply for our Eastfield utility business. They've asked for us to apply for a generator for the well that's over on Old Champion Deer. They will pay the 25%.
Oh, okay.
But this is one of the projects, we've applied once, but we can do it again for them, for us, they can have a generator on that well.
Thank you, Owen. I forgot that that was on this.
That's what, I mean, that's.
And there it say are going up to 25.
They need a one, they, they need.
Yeah, because like Owen said, we've applied once and it didn't go through, and we can go ahead and apply, or it's sitting out there on hold, but we can't apply them. So we may, you never know.
I'm making that motion that we accept.
Arseno Wilson?
I'll second.
Should I have a phone call?
You called me.
If I am, it's, okay, sorry.
Very, I'll take, make the motion and I'll second.
Would you second?
Motion been made, Mr. Bomby, and second, Mr. White, that we accept the bid as recommended by the, for the engineer and architect service in 2021 for the brick funding. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number eight is likewise, but it's going to be for the project, project management and the grant administration.
And this is the same project we were just talking about, and we received one submittal for it also, and it was with Trailer and Associates. And I recommend that we afford to Trailer and Associates.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion been made, Mr. Thompson, and second, Mr. Bomby, that we accept Trailer and Associates for the project management and grant administration for this service agreement, 2021, break funded. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Period of discussions, appropriate, if it's appropriate, approve and accept the bid for the fuel and material for all precincts.
Okay, we received, actually, we received two bids for fuel, but one came in after the hour. We can only accept one, and it was with Buildover out of Jasper. And we also received five material bids, one from Vulcan, Jack Outlander, Gulf Coast, Ottoac, and APAC. And I'm recommending that the court would accept all bids because they're all good, so that we're not limited to just one vendor.
And who was the field?
Oh, Fieldover. Same post, they did again, but it came in after. She'd been in by 11, and it was in by, didn't get her until 12.
That's where I got all my time.
So would you recommend that we go out for a rebid?
We don't have, we don't have the two fields, our suncoats, the, oh, we got it. I think you should call her.
In my experience, is this the second time I've been? Yeah, third. And since we're so limited. My opinion was, would be to accept it, and then.
All of this, perhaps, in retail.
Rebid and send that, send it to. Except the other one that you got. And then just we did. We need to send this to them, and it just, I think it was supposed to be here in time. It was the UPS or FedEx that didn't get it. And what I will tell them if they need to make it. And what I tell folks at FedEx, they say that all overnight, I said, don't overnight here because it won't get here overnight. And we try to tell them to do it at least two days.
Right.
So you might. You'll accept the materials?
Yeah.
Sure, you can accept it.
Yeah, you accept those.
Yes, accept bill, rebid.
I make the motion that we accept the Buildover, Buildover fuel bid and accept the five material suppliers. And we'll send rebid to, to a suncoast.
Second.
Motion been made, Mr. White, and second, Mr. Bomby, that we accept Dover fuel bill, bid for fuel and the five, all five of the material bids for the precinct. Any discussion? Okay, we're going to go back to number one. Discussing appropriate approved the 2021 proposed tax rate. Okay, Mr. Melissa.
I had my. I think I picked it up, yeah. They took it. Okay. I told y'all before, the no new revenue rate for this 2021 compact figure is .728586 for $100 of value. And are there any questions?
How much, how much is that raised?
Did you bring that one with me? What, I think about 13 cents? Or what is it? I didn't bring it with me. I gave it to y'all the other day, and I didn't bring it with me. You can write it down? Nope. Okay, well, I'll figure it out for you right now. Well, it's the .7286 minus .669317 equal. Going to raise it up, the no new revenue is .059269.
One more time.
Per 100, .059269 per $100 of value. And of course, I've gone over the no new, the voter approval rates and the no new, no new revenue M and O rate with y'all. With you guys, y'all have your 2021 tax rate computation sheets that shows you what the amount of money, money you will get this form right here for each, each thing, for each fund. I just. Our values are down. When values are down, tax rate goes up. Tax rate goes, values go up, tax rate goes down. So I just.
And our values are down 130 million, is that correct?
Our, our values are down over 100 million. It's a, or in that area. So like I, like I said, I know y'all have some hard decisions to make. And does anyone have any questions?
The main contributor to the values being down.
The main? There are a lot of contributions to the values being down. I would talk with Ms. Margie Herron about that, on that. We know there was a settlement, but I would speak the part on that. And also the timber's down.
And exemptions are down. I mean, the exemptions are up.
Exemptions are way up. We have an aging community. So it's just, but this happens, values, values go up and down. You can't, you can't predict it. I wouldn't, yeah. I've seen them, the, it just worsened the stock market. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Y'all heard Ms. Melissa, so we're ready to y'all like to approach.
No new revenue. Right, Melissa? No new revenue tax, correct?
The no new revenue is what would get you the same as last year. That's what would get you the same amount of revenue, about the same as you had last year.
I make that motion to no new revenue rates.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the twenty twenty proposed tax rate S, no new revenue rate, which point? Point two-seven-eight-five-eight-six. At hundred dollar value right. Any discussion? All in favor? I will. Your motion to adjourn?
I make that motion. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. White, we adjourned at one-thirty-six.